Okay, calling to order the regular meeting for the planning and zoning Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, October 11th at 7:05 PM. Since Beller is not here to keep me honest, I'll keep that, keep those notes. Um seating of alternates, though we don't have all members, we also don't see any alternates here at this time. So we'll go with the group we have, which does make a quorum of seven. So we will move forward. Also, joining us, we have Jessica Miller. As a guest, thank you, Jessica. We will move swiftly to get to your section that is near and dear to your heart for the schedule, I'm sure. Uh, okay, looking for the approval of the minutes from September 12th, 2022. Are there any edits or corrections or concerns on the minutes?
I move, we accept the minutes.
I second that.
Move, Dick seconds, all in favor of accepting the minutes from September 12th as provided?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? And abstentions?
Uh, I, I think I have to abstain because I'm not sure if I was at the meeting.
Right, I don't think we have you on here, Jerry. Nope, okay. Very good, thank you, Jerry. Abstention, so moved, okay. Moving on to public comments for those items not listed on the agenda that we will be speaking to tonight. Uh, open it up, but I don't think there's anyone on from the public. Okay, and moving on to bills. Uh, Mike, I don't think we had anything submitted. I know Alex would normally be on top of this.
Yeah, I don't think we had any bills from the Chronicle.
Okay, very good. All right, moving on to correspondence. We have a couple of correspondents here. If I can take them in order. Uh, we did receive through the town clerk's office, Sherry Much, um, a letter from a uh, person looking to possibly invest in properties in the area. Mike, was this something that you were able to provide information to Samantha Miller?
Um, I'm, I, I need a little bit more context, perhaps I'd
I'm sorry, she was the one looking to invest in properties in the area and had a number of questions about short-term rental. Sherry had provided us that.
Oh, 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 yeah, I, I mean, I did reach out to her, give her copy of the zoning regulations and some of the other sections on the, of the regs for special permits and we talked about properties and read, so I think she's all set.
Okay, very good. Again, um, just her piece, I'm looking to invest in properties in this area. I just wanted to make sure I don't buy something that isn't legally zoned for short-term renting and wanted to know the restrictions, if there are any, in the city of Ashford, Connecticut. I have some special, specific questions. I was hoping you could either answer them for me or forward me the person who can. Do you allow property owners to rent their homes out as short-term rental, which is less than 30 days? Basically entire homes and not rooms that can be rented on a nightly basis on Airbnb? If you only allow bread and breakfast, I'm looking for something that's not owner occupied? Or I can hire someone to manage it and be able to rent it out as an Airbnb? Two, if yes, is there a minimum night requirement? Three, do you need to apply for a business license to do this? And if so, what is the link to where I can find this application? Four, are there any current proposals or plans in place to vote on new restrictions for short-term rentals? If so, can you tell me what is going on? Five, does the info above pertain to all of the zip codes or only some? If not all, which ones are included, excluded, excuse me? Can you kindly attach a zoning map or link to zoning map for reference? How do I handle the room slash bed tax situation? And seven, who is the correct person to contact going forward if I have any other questions? Phone number and email would be great. Thank you for your time and I look forward to your feedback, kindest regards Samantha Miller. So that was one from September 9th, and Michael, thank you for dealing with that. Uh, on October 6th, we received an email from Brian Griffiths. Jeff and Mike, I want to report what I view as a zoning violation at 7:30 AM, October 6th, 2022. Loading of a dump truck with a front-end loader commenced. I suspect it was night construction. We are under the assumption that this is an end date to this noise. Please advise us of the current status. The stipulated judgment has September 30th as an end date. It is October and we are subject to front-end loader and other noise. I want to reiterate that this is an everyday problem, given that we sincerely hope you understand that. We would like an answer as soon as possible regarding these and other questions from prior emails. Um, I responded back to him on October 6th to Brian. Um, in that uh, we have indicated to Mr. Love and to his attorney that as per the stipulated judgment, all processing of material and final grading efforts are to stop after September 30th, 2022. However, also indicated in the judgment, Mr. Love has up to six months after September 30th to remove and only remove the already excavated and processed material from the site. As long as he performs this activity within stipulated days of the week and timeframes, he is performing with the allowances of the current judgment. We will, we will be regularly monitoring the activity on the site for compliance over the next few months and keeping our legal counsel informed of any non-compliant activity. Uh, I think I had a typo in what I sent to him instead of saying we will be, I had a we will me, and he took that as me. He came back with, as I read, the stipulated judgment indicates he has the right based on improved market conditions for material. Has he met that condition, the proved market conditions? I'm not sure what that means. It seems you would have to apply for that depending on those conditions. Who will be monitoring the site for removal of material only? Not sure about your comment that we will me regularly. Are you going to inspect the site or just meet as you indicated? And my intent was not me, but we will be inspecting on a regular basis. And now I've been there on the dates of, uh, let's see, I was there October 1st on Saturday. I didn't go Sunday. I was there on the 4th and I was there on the 6th. Uh, did not see any activity going on except for a large pile of material. Um, I see that Alex has joined us and Alex, I'd asked that, have you had any opportunity to take a ride by and see if any activity going on over there?
I drove by a few times. I didn't see the activity. I saw a large pile of accumulated dirt and everything that was there, but I didn't see anything going on.
Okay, we will pick this up farther into our discussion of 154. I just wanted to get the correspondence out for this section.
Yeah, Jeff, since you brought it up, uh, just the clarification, all of the processing equipment has been removed from the site, correct?
No, it has not.
No.
No, they're not using it as far as we can see and tell, but the processing material is still there to be removed. As I said, as I said, as I said, Dick, we will get into this with the full discussion of 154. There are a number of issues and I'm sure people have a number of questions, but thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to the public hearing that was not, um, again, Michael, as I understand this, they've uh, removed from the public hearing at this point, is that correct?
So they have just requested a postponement, so we will be advertising the public hearing for November.
And we already received this last meeting, the, uh, their application for 34 Amon Don.
Right, it was received and so we have 65 days to schedule the hearing.
Okay, very good.
Just as a, just as a point of information for the commission, the property is currently listed for sale for 365K.
That's the 34 Amon Don?
Uh, yes.
Oh, okay, interesting. All right.
And it also, it also sits within 10 feet of an adjacent property.
I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think all this information should be done at a public hearing. That Dick's bringing up.
Yeah, those items would be better handled there for that, uh, for this discussion at that point. Because this is just simply, we're not really having the public hearing at this point, so. The material that we have is the material that we have to review until we have that public hearing. Thank you, Alex. Um, moving on to unfinished business, uh, and here we are, 154 Westford Hill Road update. Um, just to let you know, after our last meeting when we had our executive session and we empowered Ken Slater to follow through on the uh, potential or the possibility of a contempt order. Um, he has gone through that filing um, based on the fact that no plans were submitted for the remuneration of the uh, area along with an update on the amount of material uh, removed, which is part of the stipulated judgment. Those are just a couple of the items that were in there. Also, on September 22nd, Alex and myself, we visited, had a site visit and we reminded that Mr. Love and his attorney that the stipulated judgment that all processing and remuneration were to cease after 9:30, 22. Um, with his request for that, he would have six months uh, to extend. He had the right to an extension to move material, truck the material that was already processed uh, and remove that off the property.
Jeff, did you move to go to executive session?
No, I did not. I'm not saying anything that isn't public record.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, that's where we are. I know Bill Falletti has requested a meeting with Ken to bring us up to speed as to where we are with any of the actionable motions that are out there. Uh, Mike, I don't know if you've had any discussion with Ken that you're able to share.
I have not, no.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't, I haven't had any discussions. It's not, I haven't had discussions I can share.
However you want to frame it, that's okay.
Let me ask the question I asked previously. Is the processing equipment still physically in place at, at the site?
Yes, it still is there.
So it could be turned on tomorrow because it's still, you know, there functionally.
Well, again, our intent, you know, compliance is obviously difficult for us, especially with the nature of uh, the individual we've been dealing with, obviously. The fact that we're filing a contempt measure kind of, uh, underlie, underscores that issue. Um, however, by monitoring on a regular basis and we know that if there's anything going on uh, outside of proper hours or that type of a processing activity, we will likely hear about it and then we would follow through with Ken Slater for further motions of contempt and the potential of, uh, well, not the potential, but seeking of uh, as per the stipulated judgment, a hundred dollar a day fines for such activity.
Yep, Jeff, I'm not sure if it's a emotion or if it's just a intent, but if he can't process the, the material, leaving the processing equipment there seems to be not in the spirit of, of what we agreed to.
Well, I think, I think whatever noise or activity it takes to remove that could perhaps have a potential also, but um, we can follow through with Ken also as, you know, um, you know, part of that remuneration of the area would be to remove any of the processing material, any of the processing equipment along those lines. So we can follow up with him to amend his contempt request. Uh, Alex, did you have any input based on the site visit or anything there regarding 154?
Well, I guess as we look at, we didn't see much of a change that, uh, there is so much more material to, to be removed if they want to do what they want to do. Uh, the only thing is, you know, we've been looking for some stuff from them for billading and all this other stuff, which we haven't received. Correct?
Right, and I, and I made a specific request to, um, both, uh, Merritt Knight and to Jeff Love to provide us with those bill of ladings for total material removed, whether it's from the last time we got a estimate or a provision of that to now or just the entire bulk amount, so we can see what the, uh, amount of material removed has been.
The only thing that will be, go ahead. So the only thing I've seen is since I've been behind it the last two weeks since we've been there is the stockpile has gotten really large, so, um, I don't know if they would do a lot, an awful lot of more processing with anticipation that they won't be able to do anymore or, or if they were just selling more. I'm not sure why the pile is a lot larger than it has been.
Right, and I know down that 30th, uh, the last couple of days, I think you had said that you had gone by and did hear a lot of processing going on at that point.
Correct.
Yeah. So we're following through, both through the courts with our legal counsel and as per the, um, stipulated judgment. Um, we will continue to, uh, and I would ask that if anyone has the opportunity to uh, do any type of a drive-by on there to, um, uh, check on activity, obviously going on to the property is not allowed unless we give 24 hours notice, uh, usually through Michael as the zoning enforcement officer. So just even stopping by and, uh, seeing if there's any additional processing going on with the file there or whatever. If you could document that, uh, that you stopped by and send an email out to Alex and/or Mike and/or my attention, that would be great.
I go by there every day. Uh, and it's been very, very quiet. I haven't seen the big trucks coming or going in there in a while. But I do, I go by there every, every single day, so I'll keep an eye.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, um, anything else? Any other comments from the group regarding 154? Oh, Valerie, good, you're here. I don't have to take notes anymore. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay, um, cannabis tax amendment update, uh, Mike, I got nothing in front of me. What do you got?
Yeah, uh, so the amendment was passed with modifications at the last meeting, so we made those modifications. Uh, we ran the notice of decision and reported accordingly to the state. So there's nothing that's left to be done. It's all squared away and filed.
Did we need any approval or review from, uh, CROG and NICOG on that?
It was submitted to both of them prior way back when we initially conceptualized the regs and the prohibition together. We got, we got a finding of no conflict from CROG and, and per usual, no comment from NICOG.
Yeah, Mike, I was reading over the minutes and just for clarification, basically, we agreed that, uh, retail, uh, sale of cannabis was a permitted, uh, activity. Uh, it's just like a package store, so it would be permitted in any of the areas and commercial areas in town. And we also agreed there would be no restrictions placed on, uh, the growing of the cannabis.
Right, I, well, I don't remember the full details of all the conversations, but I updated it accordingly. I'm happy to send it around if people want to review the, the updates based upon the motions that were made.
That would be a good idea.
Sure.
Okay, um, thank you very much, everyone. Moving on, uh, to see affordable housing plan survey results. Hopefully everyone got an opportunity to review those. Michael, I did find the ones from Alex. Thank you very much. Um, and, uh, Mike, did you want to go through that or have your discussion?
Yeah, I, I can. Um, I think when we talked about it last time, I, um, there's a fair amount of questions. We, we didn't necessarily want to go through them. I mean, I'm happy to go through them in each one, um, or we can have sort of an open dialogue if people have questions or, or something jumped out at them. Just give me one second.
Yeah, Mike, I, I think you did a nice job pulling that all together.
Thank you.
And I'd like to know who the whole, the whole hobo is.
Yeah, one in every crowd. All right. So what do we think? I mean, do we want to go question by question? Do we want to do? Did, did people have individual thoughts, concerns, questions, things they liked, that they saw? It's, obviously, we've got, um, including the open-ended question, you know, we had fair number, so I don't want to go line by line if you don't want to, but I'll defer to you guys.
Mike, I would ask, is there anything that came out of the survey that would, uh, substantially impact what you're putting together for the affordable housing plan?
Um, that's a good question and I, I would say that these results are largely what you probably would expect, which is some people see that this is something that's important and there are other people which appear fine with the idea of if Ashford becomes more expensive down the road, fine. You know, there's not an overwhelming majority of people that are just so completely against anything real regarding diversity of housing options that, that we're extremely concerned, but also not an overwhelming majority of people that just feel like we need to do whatever it takes to get these things implemented. Um, and, and think, start thinking out of the box because this is a huge issue. I think that the majority of folks would be fine if we didn't move the needle at all. Which is, um, not uncharacteristic of what we see in most towns. And that's, you know, there's a number of reasons for that, but, um, it's, you know, usually when we see results where people overwhelmingly are just opposed to it, that, that's a lot of times stems from a lack of uh, misinformation or no education on the issue. So we, we tend to flip the tone of the plan to something that's a bit more gloomy to try to get a better call to action and have them realize that they need to do something. But there's clearly some support for this here, um, so we just need to kind of parlay that into what the next steps will be. And so the second phase of this will, will be for us to then put together those appropriate recommendations for you to consider. You know, we'll basically put together a menu of 10 or 15 options for how you can make strides in these categories and then you guys can go through them and you'll decide based upon what you think is most appropriate, what should make it into the plan. If that makes sense.
Well, um, thank you, thank you, Mike. Um, yeah, I have, I have a couple of comments in there and I know I could see Janet does also. I'd like to reach out to our guest, Jessica. If there was anything specific, I know Mike provided to you and we were hoping to get some of your input, especially with the groups of people that you work with here in town and maybe you've gained some perspective there.
Thank you for, for having me. Um, I did, um, agree with what Mike had said, you know, it's kind of like a mixed, mixed bag of results, um. You know, it doesn't seem like it's the, the most forefront issue on people's minds, but, um, I think more education on the topic, uh, would be extremely helpful. Um, just getting, uh, the community to be aware of what, what the needs are in the community. Um, I think, you know, some of those questions, um, people were unsure, you know, they really don't know, they don't have a good idea or a sense of what it really means to have, uh, you know, affordable housing. Um, and what are the benefits of having affordable housing in the town? And, um, you know, I think just really getting that information out there, that education on what is affordable housing, you know, I think the, there tends to still be a negative connotation with affordable housing, whether it's Section 8 or, um, you know, and that's really not what affordable housing is. Um, I mean, that, that's, that's part of it, but it's, it's a very broad idea. Um, so, you know, I, I, I just, you know, after looking at the survey, I would say that, um, even you know, whether it's having a housing forum or, um, maybe having like a monthly page in the citizen, um, and, you know, just talking more about this plan that the town is working on and, and what it, what it could mean for the community and what are the benefits. You know, and, and within like the article, the citizen, you know, you could do infographics, um, something that's easy to read, um, catchy, but full of really good information and just to get that education out there. That, that's kind of where I'm at. But then I also had a couple of questions. I just wasn't sure like where you are in the plan and if you have like a group of people who are working on the plan or if it's, um, you know, something that the planning and zoning is doing themselves. Um, yeah, I guess I, I just wasn't, I, I, I'm not really sure where you are with the plan. I did read over the minutes, um, over the past year, you know, just to kind of catch up on what you've been doing with the plan. I know, um, Michael gave a presentation in March that was really good. Um, again, how many people really, I, I know I was at that meeting, but you know, so doing maybe a presentation to the public like that, um, just showing them different, you know, what, what, how affordable housing looks like and you gave some really good examples in that presentation. Um, so I guess I wasn't really sure where you were or if you, if you needed any help, I, I'm more than willing to help with any aspect that you, that you like.
I, I don't, I can jump in on the process. So, yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission is is the entity, I guess, that is going to be creating the plan. We aren't actually that far in that we've had some previous discussions. We did the community survey, which we kept open for longer than, and originally planned to try to gain as much, get it out there as much as we could. We put in the citizen and elsewhere. So the next step will be, I'll put together basically, as I kind of discussed, that menu of of recommendations for what we can do and some of it is policy, some of it is education, some of it is action, some of it is this, some of it is that. And then the PZC is going to have to determine exactly how much weight they want to put on the scale. Because it could be, oh, we'll have, you know, we'll have some meetings, we'll talk to some people and we'll try to think about this as being really important. Or it can be where we want to spend time putting together an action plan because the community investment fund that, that the governor Lamont just released or some of these other things allow for the creation of affordable housing and we want to pull down federal monies to go and do another phase of what we have across from Town Hall. So it'll be up to them to determine how heavy, but it'll also likely involve at least one public hearing. And the stuff that we've done to date, including the PowerPoint and the survey, et cetera, all on the website. But it's, yeah, we have, I mean, it's a struggle everywhere, sort of getting people excited about this upfront. Without creating another coalition or group of people to have meetings, you know, on a monthly basis with little. But and I guess just to get back to, you know, what you had talked about and I had mentioned previously, really what I always find most telling about these surveys are the narrative responses, right? Because then people get to say whatever it is that they feel and they don't have to fit into the box of asking a question. Um, and there's someone who wrote taxpayer subsidized housing destroys the quality of life everywhere is implemented. People who have no skin in the game have no respect for their properties, let alone properties of others in the community. Crime skyrockets, property values crash and the tax base collapses, right? So all of this is false. It's not at all what we're talking about. It's just, it's just complete misinformation. So this is telling because this shows us the perspective that we have to try to connect with when we have these public meetings. And there's a couple that are like that. I tried to pick out the one that I thought had the most exclamation points, but I think you get the pick out the one that I thought had the most exclamation points, but I think you get the.
In even in question 10, um, I think it was like the number one, um, like barrier was local attitudes, you know, so just overcoming that in itself is would be a big step in the right direction. So you're right.
And not to usurp the discussion, but I think what would be, what would be helpful for me in us trying to prepare a plan that's appropriate for Ashford would be that when we come up with that total list of recommendations, you know, obviously getting feedback from you as far as, yeah, this would make sense normally, but in Ashford, this is dead on arrival, or hey, we should think about this, like your feedback on some of those things I think would be helpful as the commission tries to determine what makes sense, knowing you see that as a viable option, for example, means I think we should put more more stock in it.
Yeah, Mike, you indicated your next step is to come up with a short list of recommendations. I would add to that list what changes need to be made to the current zoning regulations to be in compliance with what the state is asking of us, specifically the in-law apartments and some other things like that.
Yeah. So I'm going to make, I'm going to pull together the long list of what I think is the total possible universe of options, and then you guys can pick and choose the shortlist as a commission. I'm not going to cross anything off the list on your behalf.
I think that part of it, and Jessica, thank you for your input. It's really appreciated and I don't want to tell you, I don't want to tell you that that's it, you're done, because your input is very important to us when we think about what, you know, some of the things like Mike just brought up about the monies from the state. Um, and I think at the even at the Kato Rock discussion, um, you had brought up the formation of a group. Uh, and I'm sorry, I can't, I know it has housing in it, but I can't remember the other two words to it. There's some type of housing authority that.
So it's an affiliate of the Ashford Housing Authority, and it's the Ashford Housing Development Corporation. And, um, its sole purpose is to expand housing, affordable housing in Ashford, as well as rehab, pop a hollow senior housing, which is almost 30 years old. Is in need of a major rehab, but, um, long term, we want to add more housing for seniors, specifically for seniors and disabled people in in town. It's definitely.
I think that is, I think that is a direct correlation with the survey results in there, and I don't have the question in front of me right now. But it has to do who would be most affected by having additional housing and seniors at the top and young families at the bottom. I don't know what exactly we can do for young families without the a presence of a developer wanting to come in or something like that to Ashford put something in. But, um, I mean, we did it five, 25, 28 years ago. Uh, we did the senior housing 30 years ago, as you said, and maybe this gives us an avenue for expanding that now. Um, but again, we're, we're planning and zoning. Obviously, we would need, you know, your help, the selectmen's help is to, you know, gaining those monies, gaining those, those inputs to make that happen as part of this plan.
Right, right.
Janet, you would said you wanted to, I'm sorry, I didn't call in earlier.
Sorry. Um, well, I I agree with the education piece that people think it's, you know, section eight housing, and it's not, but I wanted to point out that about 61% of the respondents said they thought affordable housing was under $1,250 a month. I looked a little while ago, I was looking at rental apartments in Ashford. And aside from the senior apartments, they're like $1,100 to $1,400 a month. So most of the apartments in Ashford that are not well maintained and many of them not very nice are are higher than what people think should be affordable. And I think that's an important thing for people to understand.
There was just recently some input too, and maybe Jessica, you're the one who brought this up. I'm not sure regarding the new property owners for the apartments in Ashford and the increase in rents, even maybe even beyond what Janet had just put out.
Yes, I've gotten so many calls, um, with tenants of those properties with complaints about upreality, not realizing that I really have, I have no authority over that. And I, you know, I can only point them in the right direction. But upreality, I mean, I think they've bought in almost all of the apartment complexes in Ashford. And it seems like what they're doing is trying to get the tenants that are living there now out. And so they can renovate all of the apartments and bring in charge higher rents and then bring in students or or whomever. But the rents are going to be really unaffordable. I mean, you're talking, and I actually have a couple, I have a tenant who just moved into the senior housing and she was in one of those complexes. They were going to raise her rent to $1,500 a month. It was like a $600 increase. So if that's what they're going to do, I mean, all of most of those apartments minus maybe, I think there's a couple on Margar Road that they don't own, but are going to be really unaffordable, even for young families with kids. I mean, that's, that's, you know, unaffordable. So not to mention they're terrible property owners from what I've heard. So that's concerning that now Ashford is as, you know, it's very concerning. It's really too bad. Honestly, um, it's not a good thing for Ashford.
And this is apparently a nationwide trend that investors are buying up apartments and sucking the money out of them.
And houses.
Yeah, I just saw something about the end of the starter home. Might have been in the current this past Sunday or something that, uh, you know, there really is no such thing as starter home when people are throwing gobs of money cash at just trying to get into some place as opposed to a rental even.
Just as an aside, I have been back and forth to stores quite a bit with physical therapy and have talked to some of the people that work there. All of those units that are in store center are pretty much 100% occupied. And the rents that they're charging there are unbelievable. I mean, we're talking about, if you're talking 1,500 bucks in Ashford, some of those places are going to 2,250 and up. What drives all that is you can put three students and split it three ways. So therefore, you know, the price of of those apartments are very attractive if it's split. And I think that's the same thing that's driving what's happening in Ashford is you can bring in more students. I've got a fellow that does property maintenance for me, and I can't get him to do any more work for me because he's so busy doing property maintenance for places that are being ready to students in and around stores. So I mean, that's what's driving things, I think, a lot in terms of the price. It's not a national thing, but it's really at proximity to stores and the students.
Thank you, Dave. So, um, Jessica, I really enjoyed your pieces about education because again, if you look at questions, you know, three and four, it's pretty much a coin flip, except it's a three-sided coin. The unsure equal, you know, make up the other third. And that's where, again, that lack of education of what really a affordable housing is in its definition and who would and who it applies to. And, you know, we've been, we've, I know Janet and her team of gaining responses for the survey, you know, kind of fought that battle, tried to educate as they could without influencing the survey itself, but making people aware of what really affordable housing meant as opposed to what people thought it meant. But no, I also, yeah, you know, I think communication in the citizen, whether it's a write-up, taking not necessarily taking whole bites at the survey itself, but taking separate sections of it at a time over the next couple of months. Uh, and doing a write-up on that, presenting some of the results and like, stay tuned for next month, we'll have the rest of it. Will help with that education, um, a public presentation. Maybe we can do it on the heels of something else, whether it's a town meeting or, you know, some other part of it in order to, um, you know, gain attendance at that. And again, we'll publicize it, putting it into the citizen as well as, uh, you know, whatever, whatever other avenues, put it on to text my gov, things like that to get input. So, Mike, you are talking about, you know, working on a, the long list of recommendations for us. Jess, we had reached out besides the selectman's office. Do you think there's anybody else besides your Housing Authority and your Housing Development Commission in town that would, we would, we would all benefit from being involved with this plan? I'm trying not to just think in our own little world of planning and zoning and just share this.
I think, um, what about, and I, to be honest, I didn't even know we had an economic development committee, but I did see that on the website. And, um, so I don't know if, if, you know, getting them involved. Maybe also the Commissioner on Aging. Um, she has very good. Um, she's a really good resource for seniors in the town. She, you know, so she would be a good one. Um, I actually made a list. And then conservation as well. And I guess I was just thinking of those as, you know, within the plan, like just, you know, having getting their input on, and I guess when you come up with recommendations, just involving them, they might have different, you know, viewpoints or whatever, but it might be beneficial, it might help. I think those are the three that I came up with.
What about Melissa? Social Services for that young families section too. I don't want to leave out that big chunk, that big colorful bar.
Yeah, definitely, Melissa.
Could I, could I say something?
Sure, Valerie, go right ahead.
Well, what about the group called Our Town, Our Future?
Actually, now that you bring them up, it's probably an opportune time. I didn't bring this up as part of the correspondence because I thought we might get into it otherwise. I was approached by Mike Gatwick, uh, who was one of the leaders for the OTOF. And they are looking to do a leadership roundtable similar to what we did back in 2019, uh, where we brought in a number of the company, excuse me, the town leaders as well as those people who work and service the town. We had the postmaster there for Ashford. We had, um, the the current people at the time that were managing the Camp Connery attended. And it was really a brainstorming session, both for identifying some of the challenges, some of the goals and objectives for Ashford, some of the accomplishments for Ashford. So, um, Mike approached me about our involvement as POCD, and I would love to have as, excuse me, as P and Z. I would love to have as many members of the P and Z able to attend and be involved on that for brainstorming and ideas. It's November 16th. From seven to nine at Norton Hall. And I do have a copy, a draft copy of the agenda that I need to get back to Mike with some input on it. Man mentioned in here is the accomplishments and the 2015 Plan of Conservation and Development, which is really an offshoot from planning and zoning. I know we're three years away from having a regulatory requirement for having an update on that. But again, our initial intent was to make it some type of a living and breathing document. And I think we've kind of either talked about it or breathed life into it three or four times over the last 10 years, which was potentially more than the previous 10 years did. But, um, it would be good to see, use that as a framework or a template for some of the objectives in each of the areas of the POCD from housing to agriculture. Again, all the Conservation Commission and such, all the different areas that it touches upon. So again, bringing those groups together is what OT, OFO, OTOF is really suggesting on this. So I think it's a great idea. And again, I invite all members, if you could get, if you're interested, please let myself or Alex know, and we'll get your name added to the attendance and email list for that.
Yeah, Jeff, I would add that it's in Mike's intention to publish that agenda in the next issue of the Citizen.
Okay, all right. So by the 18th or 19th, that's Dubai. So I'll get back.
Yeah. So you need to get your input into him ASAP.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, Mike, so what I'm thinking is that, um, maybe with that being done, maybe we can get an article into the citizen in time, at least a a briefing of some of the results and things like that, or whetting people's appetite for the November piece. If I can get that done this week, get something written up, get your input, get some members to review it and get it over to the town clerk's office. What do you think?
Yeah, if you can, if you can get that done and I can help you tweak it. I don't know what her, what her deadline is, but.
Usually it's like the 18th or 19th, and if you're really nice to her, it turns into the 20th, but we'll try to push that envelope.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to review anything. So just send it over and we'll see if we can get it in.
Yeah, just so, just so another month doesn't go by. That's all. You know, we're always under a deadline on something. Any other input from our guest Jessica or from Mike on that?
Um, if you, I mean, I can, I think infographics are so handy. They're such a good tool. You are every, I would always, we'd be willing to do one just on what is affordable housing. Um, and I can send that to Mike and then he could we could, or I can send it to you, Jeff, and you can send it to the whole committee. I mean, we could add that in the citizen for November along with whatever you're going to write up. Just to, just to start, this is a good starting point.
So we either go with two separate, we cover it from cover to cover, or we just incorporate it into the not not a lengthy article, but article and some input, some, give it some teeth for people to chew on and take it in that, you know, this is something that is very important. And as I said, potentially, I could even bring it up to Mike for the agenda for the Leadership Roundtable Meeting.
I posted the survey and the Affordable Housing Plan introduction presentation that I did on on the town's website, but I can, I can also add that infographic as well. So, yeah, I mean, it can't hurt to have more information. And yeah, sometimes the more concise it is, the more likely people are to like, take the time to look at it so that I'm happy to post that if you send it to me.
Okay, people tend not to go to the town website. So if you put something into the citizen, put a link to what you just described in the article that points them to where to find it on the town website.
And again, you know, I'm thinking of something that isn't so much, maybe a little bit of narrative, but more so, you know, some of the bullet points, some of the high points that, you know, we'll find and, you know, you can find more information as the Dick said, you know, by clicking on this link and going to the website. That might be a good thing. Okay. Again, Jessica, thank you for your input. We really appreciate it. And again, we will be reaching out frequently.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, um, new business, uh, new business items are really a receipt of a number of applications. So, uh, let me pull out what I have here. Okay, first item is application for receipt, uh, PZ two, two, five subdivision application for three eighty-three, three ninety-three Pumpkin Hill Road. Owner is T Bunce or Bunte, uh, applicant, uh, Dorothy Family Garletti. Uh, and this is again, a receipt, uh, with the application set for a November fourth meeting, for full discussion. Uh, Mike, all the forms have been submitted appropriately?
Yes. Yep. They are currently going through, um, the wetlands submission, which is required before you guys can do anything with it.
Okay. The one thing I did see was that, or was that the other thing? Oh, that was something, was that something else? Oh, there it is. Let's say the other one. Okay. So they're going through the wetlands and, um, fees have been paid?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and we are scheduled for November fourteenth or currently scheduled for November fourteenth for them?
I haven't run the legal notices yet because it's too far out, but yeah, these will all be for the regular meeting.
Potentially, okay. Any issues, any other issues that, uh, you think need to be brought up at this point?
Nope.
Okay, uh, seeing as that the, uh, I's are dotted and the T's are crossed for receipt. Uh, I look for a motion to receive this subdivision application. So we can have, uh, discussion at our next meeting.
I moved to receive this application. Alex.
Alex, thank you. Any seconded? Anyone seconding?
Janet, I'll second it.
Janet Bellamy seconding. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Okay, that's number one. Uh, number two is a, uh, special permit, uh, PZ dash two, two, dash six, uh, per section three hundred seventeen D for short-term rental at seventy-three Lakeview Drive. Uh, owner applicant Jay Hall. Uh, again, application set for November fourteenth meeting and would be sent out. Um, so again, this is a special permit request. Uh, fees have been received, Michael?
Yep.
And forms appropriately filled out?
Yep.
Any issues or concerns we should be aware of at this time?
None that I've identified.
Jeff, I want to bring up, uh, public information relative to this property and also comment on the letter that you read into the car spawnance earlier.
Okay.
This property is currently not only occupied. It was purchased, uh, sometime in the, uh, spring of two thousand twenty-two. And the people that have purchased it, uh, are intent on, uh, their intent is to, uh, rent it out, use an Airbnb. And it sounds with that other letter that you had, that there's interest in obtaining properties in and around Lake Chaffey and Ashford Lake for the purpose of short-term rentals. It appears that that might be a trend that is starting to take place. I would say that we should make sure that we've, uh, and we did vet our regulations quite carefully back a year or two ago, but, uh, it, it sounds like we're going to have more of these come in our way.
Right. And with this application, again, you know, they, they can say this, but you know, we would, uh, with the hearing, that the short-term, uh, Airbnb or Verbo in accordance with the regulation set forth, P and Z regulations article, in this case, four B, section four, um, should be the, uh, codified, the, uh, three hundred. But, um, you know, as, you know, they can state this and we will review it and vet it appropriately, uh, when the time comes for the, uh, hearing. But, uh, thank you for that. Yes, it does seem like a trend as we have, you know, at least two here and we have the one from before. So, um, you know, all I can say is that we do need to look at these appropriately and make sure that they follow the regs, uh, especially when it comes to permitting, as well as following up for any type of complaints or anything afterwards that would disallow them from being, uh, renewing their permit, making sure we have that, um, compliance, uh, and we're able to, uh, follow through on that. So thank you for the input, Dick. Uh, the, uh, fees, the forms are good, no concerns at this time. Then I have a motion to, uh, receive this, uh, application.
Motion.
Dick motions, uh, a second? Mark Shawell seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. The, uh, last application is PZ two, two, seven, a special permit for section three hundred dash twenty point one for increased lot coverage at ten Oakview Drive. Um, owner applicant is D Lester. Again, this is a receipt. This would actually, um, fall to the December twelfth meeting and that falls within our guidelines, Mike?
Yep. So, um, basically because we're going to have Affordable Housing Plan, Pumpkin Hill Subdivision, Special Permit at Lakeview and Special Permit for Amadon, all public hearings for November. I told this applicant to consider pushing to December because they're not in a time crunch.
Okay, good. And they agreed to that?
Yeah.
Beautiful, beautiful.
As, as a comment on the application, um, it seems, uh, my reading through of what they proposed to do, it's, it sounds like they are making, uh, an effort in light of what we had put in our lot coverage regulations to find ways to, uh, comply with that. We can discuss it when we have the pub, public hearing and the discussion thereafter. But it's encouraging that, uh, someone's actually going back and looking at the things that we did and taking those into account with the application.
Well, it's, it's always good to see your work in print. So, um, you know, the work of the commission uh, with both, uh, the lot coverage at the, uh, lake sites with the new regs around the lakes as well as the short-term rentals that I know Mark and Janet have worked so hard on, um, in coming through. So timely, effective. And, you know, helps to put us where we need to be. So, uh, Mike, uh, forums, uh, forums and plans are in. I saw an, uh, A1 site plan they provided.
Yep, they're all squared away.
Okay, fees?
Yep.
And, uh, any other issues? No wetlands issues or anything here, as I see?
Nope.
Okay, uh, seeing as that all those items are approved and, uh, again, we'd be setting this for our December twelfth date. I seek a motion to accept this application. Received, excuse me, received, not accepted, received this application. Dick, uh, motions. Do I have a second?
Second, Alex.
Alex seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Thank you folks very much. Last item, zoning officers report.
So, uh, since our last meeting, actually, there's been a fair amount of coordination between the four public hearings that we're currently scheduling. As you may or may not have heard, the town has a new assessor. So, um, working with her and kind of the interfacing between the two offices with how, um, we coordinate with, with various, uh, information that she captures related to some enforcement items that we deal with on registered vehicles, et cetera. It's been working with her to kind of introduce her to things that we do and that I do and, um, making sure that we're, you have a smooth transition there. We've had a couple of things come up, uh, related to some really, really old enforcement um, issues or what may have led to enforcement issues, which we're trying to, um, kind of figure out the path forward on that, one of which, forget the property, but it's the, um, monastery or, or former monastery. So the, the documentation that matches the file and things that were, were written by this commission don't match up with things that happened in the town hall. So the property owner is trying to get the property on the market and that's taken a lot of research. Um, we've done, um, had a couple of other new zoning complaints come in. Obviously, we've talked about Westford Hill. And, um, the last thing I was going to mention just fell completely out of my head. I don't know. I'm totally blank.
You're too, you're too young to have that happen to you, Michael. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mike, for the, for the education of the commission, could you give us a summary of, uh, person that's the new assessor and her background or his background?
Um, so what I know is that her, uh, her, her first name is Lynn. I forget her last name, but I'll tell it to you in a second. She is Ashford's former assessor. She left Ashford and went to work in two small towns, um, and about seven or, her name is Lynn Byberg. She, and so seven, seven or eight years ago, I think she left the town to go work for two smaller towns and, um, upon Kara Fishman departing Ashford, um, she, she's come back. So I don't know her, but I know that everybody in town hall is very excited from what I can tell to have her back. And she seems really knowledgeable. Um, so we're, we're working on how we can get um, her document, her data more up to, her up-to-date information on the NICOG GIS site and the town's permitting site, because those are not updated regularly. So she's really, um, grabbing the bull by the horns, which is great.
Hey, Mike, I have a question. Uh, monastery, approximately, how many acres is that?
Um, that is a good question. There are multiple lots there. Um, so the, the piece of property in total, the owner who has it now, um, has multiple lots. I can tell you in one second. Um, so effectively, the issue that, that um, we're trying to sort of peel apart and figure out is that there was some documentation from this commission many, many, many years ago, which said, we understand you want to put a a chapel or, or some type of religious building on the property with a, with an associated dwelling unit. But you already have two dwelling units on the property. Adding that would be a third dwelling unit, which is a violation of the zoning regs. So that's not going to work. Um, they have a lot of property, so reconfiguration of the lines to make it so that it wouldn't have been an issue was certainly possible, but, but within, within two months of that formal letter being written by the then secretary of the PZC, um, a lot, a, a, a lot line reconfiguration was filed with the town clerk, but it didn't actually move the property lines. And then the chapel was built with the dwelling unit shown on the plan. So now it's a twenty-four acre parcel with two single-family homes. I believe they're race ranch style houses, one of which was formerly apparently used as a bakery. And then a partially constructed chapel with a third dwelling unit attached. So the, the guidance that came from this commission many, many years ago does not seem to jive with what happened moving forward. So, you know, um, that is not a big deal when you have the property owned by a religious organization looking to use it for religious purposes. They don't care whether there's two or three single-family homes, it didn't matter. But it's now owned by a person who purchased it at an, you know, out of a foreclosure auction, who would like to sell the property. And they have a twenty-four acre lot with three houses and a partially completed chapel. So I'm not exactly sure how they got from where they were to where they are. Um, but it, it's, it's, so there's some, some, oh, some web that has to be untangled and we're kind of working on that with the realtor and going through the maps in the clerk's office and there's a huge file on this in our office from P and Z and building. So, it's been a good bit.
You say it's three lots now, Mike?
So there's a twenty-four acre parcel and then a ten acre parcel, which are jointly owned. Um, but it's all on one piece. And so when I spoke to the realtor, I basically said, I'm not seeing anything that supports you ever having the ability to build this on this lot. But the good news is you have another parcel with nothing on it. So you can solve your own problem, but I'm not sure they, they want to do that.
Just kind of gerrymander it, huh?
It's a have your cake and eat it too scenario to some degree.
Ah, the bakery. Yes, very good. Okay.
Yeah, there you go. Bringing it all back around.
You missed it. They used to make cookies for Halloween. It was actually really, really good.
Yeah, well, it would have been better if they had converted it to a bakery and gotten rid of the house because then it wouldn't have been another single-family home, but.
Right, right, right. Would have been.
These structures are like, they're not even, they're not even fifty or sixty feet apart. So you can't even put a property line between them and without creating a new non-conformity. It's just, it's been interesting.
Yeah, Jeff, as, just as a comical aside, uh, a monastery making Halloween cookies? Seems like a, seems, seems like a bit of a contradiction.
You would have loved your sweat, you would have loved the Mother Superior sweatshirt with the ghosts and spiders and everything, witches and stuff.
Before my time.
Yes. Um, okay, Michael, anything else?
Uh, not, not off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. Are you in the office, uh, at all the rest of this week after today?
I was there today. I don't know if I'll be back on Thursday. If you need, do you need something or I can?
Well, no, I just didn't know, uh, with, with putting the article together that I was looking to do, I just didn't know if I needed to like bang heads with you, but we can always call and talk. So that's not a problem.
Yeah.
Email's a wonderful, email's a wonderful thing.
NICOG has a meeting there tomorrow night for their, uh, regional, um, economic development strategy. Um, so I was there today, meeting with them, get all the technologies set up. So fingers crossed that'll go well tomorrow. But for anybody who's interested, they're having that. It's, they refer to it as their SEDS Plan, C E D S, Community Economic Development Strategy. So, uh, the folks from NICOG will be hosting that meeting tomorrow at the Ashford Town Hall.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff, uh, a lot of what's going to go on at that meeting would be of interest to the P O C D. So, you know, if anyone's got time to sit in on that, that would be a good idea.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you.
It will be hybrid. So you don't have to go. If you want to attend from home, you can attend via Zoom.
Excellent. Okay, that being said, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion from Dick, second it.
Second, Janet.
Janet seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
I thank you all for your attention. Thank you all for your efforts. We really appreciate it. Um, again, any input you can give regarding the affordable housing. Or, uh, again, as we work on the P O C D, we have a couple of other items as mentioned in the last meeting that we want to work forward to, especially with alternative energies. Uh, and getting those, uh, up to speed. So again, thank you for your efforts and, um, we'll be in touch. Have a great week.